There we go, we're all, we're recording.
Okay. Thanks for joining us, everybody. Today is Thursday, May 7th, 2020. It's 1:00 PM and we are in a work session. This is a meeting of the Marquette Township Board, doing a second interview with one of our manager candidates, applicants. And a little housekeeping for everybody. You should be on column view up in the right-hand corner.
Yeah, I'll review. Yeah, I'll review.
Yeah. Correct. Column view is the problem because some people were having some issues with screens popping up with everybody. So if you go to that, I'm also going to ask that everybody mutes unless you're speaking. And if you have a question, get my attention and I will be happy to call on you. Feel free to ask questions as we get farther into the interview. The background noise we're trying to eliminate. Make sure everybody's not, because these conditions are not structured enough. We're used to our big boardroom. We do have Roger available if there are any questions. He's, I can just give him a call or email him. So today is going to be what I'm calling a range of discovery. The structure on the questions will be a little bit different. Go ahead, Randy.
We have to do roll call first.
I'm just, I'm just doing my housekeeping stuff.
Okay.
But yeah, that's all I had. Go ahead, do your roll call.
Okay, board members take yourself off of mute before I do a roll call. Okay, trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Person.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clark Rattar is here and supervisor Durant.
Here.
I think that's everyone. Staff present is, I see, I think our fire chief Dan Shanahan is here. And I think our accountant Lowstone House is here. That's in our manager, manager Gerard is here also. So that's all I can tell by my screen who is here, so.
That's what I see too. We have another iPad, but I don't know who that is. Okay, public comment? Okay, that was Frank. We have a couple. Randy, go ahead.
No public comment from email.
Okay. Anybody here? And I'm gonna make sure I leave enough time after I ask the question because there is a little bit of a delay for everybody. Just so we have everybody covered. So with no public comment, we have no board member comment. So again, today's discussion is going to be a second interview of two of our four candidates. We have Thomas Marcus joining us today. And the board has a list of about eight questions. We'd like to have maybe a three or four-minute answer so that we can get all of them in and then allow the board members to ask other questions and you toward the end of the hour. We've figured about an hour for this interview, hour for the next one. Give everybody kind of an equal opportunity. So just in general questions. Tom, when do you expect you could assume the position?
June 22nd.
Okay. Everybody can make a note of that. And did you have anything you wanted to add to your last interview or ask us any questions before we get into the big questions?
No, maybe towards the end I'll have a few questions, but at this stage, I just soon get through your questions and make sure we have enough time for that.
Excellent, okay. So, in everybody asking their questions, I'd like you to relax and pretend you're the manager already. And answer these questions as if you were at a board meeting. And try to do three or four minutes. Nobody's gonna time them, but just so they're not too involved. And each board member will have a question and then we'll see what happens after that, okay?
Okay.
All right, Dave, you've got the first question. Don't forget to unmute everybody. When?
Considering today's environment of anticipated revenue losses and with that, the subsequent need to explore new and innovative ways to lower expenses. If you would share your thoughts and/or experiences with respect to intergovernmental agreements designed to provide shared services as a means to reduce expenses or improve services.
Okay, over the years, we've been gauged in the different communities I've worked in and a number of intergovernmental relationships. I'll talk a little bit about Birmingham, Michigan. First, we had what was called SACRA, which was the Southeast Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority. And one of the things that I think relates to Marquette Charter Township is not only did we have a MRF, Material Recovery Facility, that all the communities managed themselves, we went to bids for our garbage collection and crossed borders and used computer modeling so that we could have the most efficient pickup of garbage collection services throughout a major regional area. As a result, boundaries were not necessarily coterminous with a municipal boundary. They'd go from one community to the other in some crossover to make the most efficient pickup type of service. So I've had a lot of experience in sharing those types of services in emergency services, sharing the equipment purchases. So that not every department was, you know, using, that every department could use a piece of equipment instead of every department having an individual piece of equipment. So those are just a couple examples. I've had a lot of experience with intergovernmental cooperation and coordination. We shared a health department down in Lawrence, Kansas with the county and with the other municipalities in that county. There's all sorts of opportunities there as long as you can communicate with the other agencies. Make sure that the service delivery is as good as it was on an individual basis under a collective basis. And set some strategic goals as to what you want to accomplish by going to a mutual approach rather than just maintaining the service at your own level. So I think that's probably three minutes or less, hopefully.
Anything else, Dave?
No, that'd be fine. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thanks. Second question is Pete's. Unmute.
Tom, consider the same financial challenges mentioned previously. What is the direction you would take in the first month of the job, the first year of the job and plan for five years? What steps would you take?
I think that one of the very first things to do would be to sit down with the board and the key staff personnel and really have a discussion about where we're at at this point. And quite frankly, I'd like to involve our, your current township manager in those conversations as well. If we can convince him to come back to a meeting to do that. I think, I think that there's a wealth of information, obviously, that you folks all have. And quite frankly, I need to get up to speed with what you know. And then have a conversation with all of you about how we can approach things. I think at that time, we should start a process over the first year or so, thinking about how far out a year gets us in terms of what we can afford. And then start to prioritize what the most important things to the township are. Remember, my comment earlier was we should hope for the best and plan for the worst. And I think this economy is kind of the next shoe to drop is that, you know, from the coronavirus pandemic issue, I think the economy is gonna start to really stress us. So I think we need to have our priorities lined out. I think we need to get back into that strategic plan for the first year. And then start really rolling that into a five-year implementation. Once we get, you know, a plan in place. We might want to take a little bit different approach with the strategic plan. We might want to do levels where we establish what the highest priority is and then second and third in terms of our projects so that we know that as incomes change and evolve over the next five years, we know what our priorities are. We revisit it probably at least annually along with the budget to make sure that we're rolling those things into budget. So that's kind of a, I suppose, a short answer to a pretty complicated question.
Okay, any follow-up, Pete? Unmute. Can't hear you. You move your arrow instead of using your hands, maybe?
I hit something on it.
There you go.
No, that was a, like I said, I listened to all these last night and went over them because it bothered me because the next four or five years, even the next two years is gonna be very important because the economy is not gonna be right. I wrote through around the other day, I just wondered how many of these businesses are gonna be here, you know? What kind of income are we gonna have? We know what we're gonna get from the state and everyone else and we're gonna have to do more ourself. Do we have to put all our plans on hold or? We need somebody with a steady hand, just a guy that's through the thing with some experience and I liked his answer. So that's what I would think. Just take it in baby steps and go, keep on going, just don't stop. So, thanks, John. I mean, no, yeah. Thomas, I get it.
That's all right.
You see a name and it sticks with you.
Yeah, the last name's cool, so that's.
That's what's important. I get called a lot of.
Okay, thanks, Pete. Ernie, you've got question three.
Yes, Tom, thanks for being here, Tom. The question I have is if if a personnel problem becomes known with your immediate step, what would be your procedure for addressing it?
Well, you know, and your question is fairly broad. You know, sometimes it depends, quite frankly, on the circumstances of that issue, but normally I'm fairly direct about those kinds of issues. Speaking with the employee and making sure they understand where where the employee may be falling short. And then arranging initially for some sort of performance plan to hopefully get that problem corrected to begin with. And giving a person, you know, the necessary direction and steps for that person to correct whatever behavior consideration you're trying to get changed. So I think a lot of times, you know, that interaction is probably the most important thing for people to understand how critical it is to just sit down and have that conversation with the person to make sure they understand what the expectations of the organization are. And letting them know that, you know, there's a, there's a path for correction if they choose to take it. I like to say that that responsibility is really on the employee. First, the managers and, you know, the city or township has to make sure what, you know, what the expectation of the employee is and then convey that. And then usually that opportunity for the employee to understand what their role is and their job is is has to be made very clear. But on a corrective path, I think it has to be, it has to be verbalized and it has to be documented so that the employee understands there's a seriousness into getting that corrected.
Okay, any follow-up, Ernie?
No, I think he answered the question very well. Thank you.
Okay, good, thanks.
You're welcome.
John, you're up next.
You have a question.
Oh, Dave.
You have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, Tom, I was just wondering how you see the documentation of all this going with your personnel interactions? Is it documented or is it just sit down and have a fireside chat? How do you approach it?
Oh, I, both. You know, if it's a minor issue, I might just sit down and have a verbal. But if it's something where you're concerned about real performance, it has to be documented. You know, a note has to be placed in the file. Now, quite frankly, you know, usually I make arrangements for an employee. If it's corrected, then that, that item would be removed from the file after a certain period of time. So that that isn't a cumulative impact on that employee. The objective is to get the behavior concern corrected. That's the objective. To me, it's not necessarily that discipline is, is the ultimate goal. It's to improve the performance consistent with what you're trying to achieve with the township.
Okay, is that good? Dave?
Thank you.
Okay, Pete, you raised your hand. Unmute.
All right. Got it?
Yep.
All right, question. Years ago, we used to deal with, between union and management. Now, I always said that make sure, three little points. Tell them what they're doing wrong. Tell them what they have to do to correct it and tell them what's gonna happen if they don't. Usually pull me through a lot of things and it created enough conversation we afforded to it, you know, it don't have to be, you know, fighting and that, but as long as they, first of all, find out if they really understand. A lot of times they don't understand it. Tell them what they expected of them and tell them what way you're gonna do it if they don't do it. And that sort of protects everybody. And I think that's what he's basically saying there.
Agreed.
Thanks, Pete. Okay, John, you have number four?
Okay. Thomas Marcus. In your previous assignments as city manager in Lawrence, Kansas and as city manager in Birmingham, Michigan, what weakness did you find in the two-city organizations?
Okay.
The question was more personal. We're looking for his greatest weakness, not in the organizations.
That's the question I'm asking.
Okay.
So you're asking me what my greatest weakness was?
No, no, she is.
Yeah.
Your previous assignment says city manager in Lawrence, Kansas and a city manager in Birmingham, Michigan. What weakness did you find in those organizations?
Go ahead, Thomas, you can answer that and answer the one about yourself.
Okay. I think in Birmingham, Birmingham, quite frankly, I took over a manager's position in Birmingham, Michigan from a long-term manager. In fact, the manager started in Birmingham, Michigan that I followed the year I was born. And had been there that whole period of time. Now, you can, you can imagine the math there. Between the two of us, we ended up having almost 50 years of service in Birmingham. I was there for 22 years. And so I'd say maybe the weakness that I saw there was that they had a tendency to fix things more with a Band-Aid. And I like to think that when you spend the energy, manpower, financial resources to fix something, I like to make sure that it's fixed on a longer-term basis. Now, there's, there's times when you have to make emergency repairs, but I felt that they were patching, quite frankly, a lot of capital improvements when they should have been rebuilding them or replacing them. And so that was the one challenge I saw there. In Lawrence, Kansas, I would tell you that I thought their finances were not well monitored, not well reported. And quite frankly, they were a fairly sophisticated operation. But I don't think that their technology of monitoring their finances had kept up at all. And it left some real gaps. And so during that period of time, we uncovered a number of cases where we had accounts receivable that had not been collected. And so I went back, quite frankly, personally went back to a number of counts that had not made payments and recovered them. And I think that was someplace between $800,000 and $1 million that we went back and collected. But that wasn't the only area, quite frankly, where I saw some real weaknesses in the financial operations. And it's, you know, it was a very, you know, it was a large operation. But some of it was just basics, in my opinion. You know, it's just what the expectations are for a sound financial reporting, accountability process. I just didn't think it was where it should be in terms of a city of that size or a city of that sophistication. As to my own personal weaknesses, oh, I probably have lots of them. I think we all do. I think a couple of things. I think that there's always the challenge between life and work balance. And sometimes I think that managers can find themselves too steeply, deeply involved, quite frankly, in only work. And life is about balance and making sure that you're healthy physically, mentally, and that you have outside interests besides just your work. And I think I've, I think I've gained in that regard and I think it makes the end of the day, a better person and a better manager. So I'd say some of the balances about, you know, how you live your life and the relationships with your family and making sure that's all in balance. It's sometimes these jobs can consume people. And you can get yourself too far down in that, that direction, in my opinion. So I think that's, that's something that I'm aware of and I, and I pay attention to now that I, that, that I've been in this business. And, you know, when I was younger, I can tell you that that really consumed me because you're still learning as a younger manager and experiencing those things. I think as you mature, you realize that, you know, your health and your intellect are important to maintain a bit of variety in how you live your life. So Debbie and I have focused on those things as a family and with our children and grandchildren, that that is an important part of our lives. I hope that addresses your concerns.
Smaller community might be able to do that easier. John, go ahead, follow-up?
Yep, I just want to thank Mr. Marcus for his answer and I am pleased with the response we got. And I think it was one way to get it was to tailor the question just a little bit differently than proposed.
That's fine. We got
Thank you.
We got both answers, that's good.
You're welcome.
Hi, Thomas. My answer, my question is short and hopefully not the answer is sweet, but describe your worst supervisor.
Describe my, pardon me?
Describe your worst supervisor slash boss.
Oh, my worst?
Yeah, your worst.
WRST?
Yeah.
Oh. You know, I, I've worked for a lot of, lot of people. I'll, I'll tell you about one individual. For the longest time, I had a crick in my back from that individual. And I think probably, I think the individual kind of, I would describe as a super micromanager and was a bit too dominating amongst the governing board. I don't think that it was a democratic process. I think I would say the person was exceptionally bright, exceptionally well-read, exceptionally knowledgeable about the business. But from a personality standpoint, I thought the person was at times abusive to our public and abusive to our staff. And that causes an occasion. In my particular case, I had to stand up for our staff. And it, you know, it, there was friction there. It caused some friction. So that would probably be my worst supervisor, you know, manager or overseer that I was involved with. And, you know, in the long run, life moved on and I stayed and that person chose to get out of office, but it was difficult while he was there. And he, quite frankly, I'm not the only person, obviously, that thought that. It was pretty well-known in the community. So I think it was a combination of micromanagement. I think it was a combination of just a personality that was not very friendly to our public and, and made comments to our public that I thought were laxability and really inappropriate. And that just made it difficult for the fellow commissioners and for the staff, so. Hopefully that wasn't too.
No, well, thank you, Tom. I've been here for 14 years, tennis clerk and or as a previous trustee, so I can really see where you're coming from at times. And I appreciate that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thanks. Dan, you have the next one?
Yes, Thomas, thank you. How would you describe your personality to someone who doesn't know you, you know, on and off the job and how do you feel?
How do you feel people feel about me?
Yeah, well, how would you describe your personality?
Um, well, I can tell you that Frank and I discussed my first interview and Frank thought I came across as rather serious. And actually, I, I do think I have a sense of humor, but so I talked to my wife about it. And I said, do you think I come across too serious? And she said, yeah, you, you know, but you're pretty serious-minded. You're a pretty serious person. And, and I recognize that I am. I, I take my work seriously. I, I, you know, I can tell you when I'm not at work, I always have something to do. You know, I always have a project. I'm always working on something. I think it's in my nature. It's, it's probably the, you know, growing up in a large family, you know, we all had responsibilities and jobs, so I am serious, but I think it's, it's waned over the years. I'm not, I'm, I'm, I think I've gained in patience. I recall my dad telling me, you know, years and years ago, Tom, you need to be more patient. His favorite line was, let the tool do the work, Tom. And I hope some of you that work with tools will understand what that means. But I was always ahead of the saw when I was sawing, if you know what I mean. I was forcing it and let, instead of letting the saw do the work. And somewhat that relates to sometimes some of the personality, right? That, you know, you want to get it done. And so I've had to learn to be a lot more patient, let things play themselves out. And especially in the public venue, what you realize is that sometimes process has a very important part of letting things work themselves through our process of governance. And you just can't rush things. You know, you gotta get buy-in. You gotta make sure the public knows what you're doing. You gotta, you gotta build the trust with the public to make sure that they're on board with what you're trying to accomplish. You need to be, you need to be forthcoming with information. You need to be candid about how you think about things. And so you need to let people know what's going on so that they, they have confidence and trust that things are being handled and, and things are being watched for them. So I'd say I've gained. So I'd say I've gained in some patience over the years. And I'm always reminded whenever I'm working on a project around the house, Tom, you know, let the tool do the work. So, you know, I've slowed myself down, okay? But personality wise, it's, you know, it's part of my makeup. That's who I am. So hopefully that gives you an impression of how I think of myself.
And that's why I threw the question out there in the last interview about the pickleball. I wanted to see you smile a little bit, and we always had this little joke about pickleball up here. So good to see you smile. Thank you.
All right. You can remind me, you can remind me of that.
I'm wondering about what the most difficult decision you've had to make at one of your jobs.
Oh, you know, for the longest time when I was in Birmingham, like I said, I served there for 22 years. And, you know, the thing about Detroit is that once you become more steeped in understanding the regional impact of the auto industry in Detroit, you can kind of predict what is going to happen in your economy. And so one of the things that I take a lot of pride in, but one of the things that was really difficult was thinking that we needed to get ahead of what I predicted to be a pretty strong recession that we were going to run into. And of course, things started to tumble really fast for the big three in that economy, and then that affected housing and all that. And so, you know, one of the difficult challenges, well, how do you, how do you adjust your staff? How do you, how do you right-size your staff? And so fortunately, I got out ahead of it a lot sooner than when the actual recession started. And so I went around and talked to the different employee groups and I explained attrition to them and made sure that they understood that I was not trying to eliminate their job. I wanted to keep them employed, but that what we had to do was not fill positions. And so what we started to do is, in all categories, we really started to look at not filling those positions when they, when they came, when they became vacant. And the employees bought into it. They got it. They understood it and they were very supportive of it because they understood that the real point was to keep their jobs and to hold on to their jobs. And as a result, they started cross-training themselves. They kept things moving. There was no pushback at all. But again, that was because we had built some trust over the years with the management staff and with the personalities in the department. But it was, it was, it was a difficult choice. Ultimately, if we laid off one or two employees, I think that was the extent of it as a result of that recession, which to me was proof that we probably had done a pretty good job of getting that together. But it, it's tough, you know? I can be, I can be the toughest manager in the world. We all, all managers can be. But hopefully, hopefully, we all have a heart and we all care about the people that work with us. And we need to, you know, we need to understand that, you know, they're likely supporting a family, they're likely supporting themselves, and, and employment's critical. And when you see the unemployment numbers or claims for unemployment right now, it's devastating to me. I mean, I, I just, my heart goes out to families that are trying to survive all of this right now. And it's, that's, I think that's the most difficult challenge of being a manager, is dealing with the right sizing of an operation and how you deal with employees and being forthright and straight up. But I think you always have to have empathy and compassion for how you have to deal with those situations and take that into consideration as you go forward. And I think when I look at an operation the size of Marquette Township, you know, it's even more critical because every one of those positions are so critical to the operation that you have that you just, I don't know, I don't know about cutbacks in an organization, quite frankly, the size. I would, I would guess that Randy and all of you have really paid attention to the sizing of your staff so that that's not, it's not where you can really go in terms of how you right-size your organization. You're probably going to have to cut projects before you can cut employees because those employees are so critical to your operation. So I think we're all in for some really serious challenges that way. And I've dealt with those in the past, you know? I think through them a lot about how we deal with right-sizing types of issues, but those are, those are the more difficult challenges that I think managers face, and I do as well.
Good. So on the flip side of that, what are you passionate about?
What am I passionate about? Well, I'll tell you what, I'm passionate about, from the employee standpoint, and I have a couple of parts to this, so bear with me. I'm really passionate about taking younger employees in the organization and developing them and really trying to encourage them to maximize their potential and to seek leadership opportunities in local governance. More and more, I'm seeing where less and less people are choosing our careers. And so I've really encouraged a lot of younger, younger people in our employee to seek leadership opportunities through programs that we did internally for training and outside opportunities for training and encouraging them to do that. The other thing I'm really passionate about, and when you get into a lot of organizations, there's, I'll say it this way, there's workhorses and there's show horses. And in every organization, there's a workhorse that doesn't get recognized. And so I seek out those workhorses because, quite frankly, they are a huge part of an And make sure that they're not passed over in advancement opportunities. I look for those folks. And every organization has them and every organization seems to, at times, just overlook their potential to move up the ladder. And so I encourage department heads to look for those people in their organizations so that they are advancing them and they're being rewarded for all the hard work they do. Again, in bigger organizations, there's a lot of workhorses and a number of show horses on occasion, too. The other thing that I'm really passionate about is seeing, I love construction, okay? I love, I love to see improvements made in local governance. I love to see new park facilities, new municipal facilities, and done well, and recognizing that they should be built with some permanence in mind because in the long run, you're building them to last lifetime for an organization. So I like the construction part of this. I like seeing things accomplished. Quite frankly, that is one of the big reasons I went into this business because you could see things accomplished in, you know, in your lifetime. You could, you could start from the planning process all the way through and get some things done. So those are my passions.
And in government, it can take a lifetime to get one thing done.
Yes, it can. So that's why you got to have those younger people ready to step up and move in and keep it going.
True. Okay, those are the list of regular questions we had, and I know a couple of you have extra questions. Who wants to go first? Dave?
Tom, first, I got a comment on your "don't get ahead of the tool" comment. I spent 15 years in construction and I still got a residential builder's license, and that was straight out of my father's mouth and I passed it on to everybody that in my way. It was, get out of my way, let me do it. Pete knows all about it. Anyway, I'm sure what's coming up here is we're going to see a loss in our revenue and we're going to see, we're going to have a intention of continuing the improvements that we started down that path. And I'm wondering if you have any experience in the grant writing from federal, state, and local authorities and what your successes have been in those areas?
Yeah, we, of course, in larger organizations, you oversee a lot of that. You don't actually put the pen to paper or the keyboard to work on a lot of that. But yes, we, in all phases, economic development, facility improvements, telecommunications, police grants, all sorts of different grants that we have pursued over the years and have been successful with them in just about all facets. Justice Department for the Police Department has a number of different grant programs that they provide funding for. And a lot of times, we've rolled in external funding into the prioritization of capital improvements. You know, if you can, if you can secure outside funding, that moves a project up maybe ahead of another project that doesn't have outside funding but relies solely on local funding. So, you know, that's, that's something you always have to be aware of, you also, you always have to be pursuing. And I think, you know, with the emergency funding that the federal government has, has come across, I think we need to, as managers, we need to be monitoring that with our professional associations and our township association in this case, to make sure that the state who's receiving the funds is, is looking at that that money be redistributed to our townships to, just as the League of Cities does it with the cities. And so those are all really important at this particular time to be aware of those programs and watch how that money is being used so that we remain viable as governmental entities. So kind of a two-pronged answer, yes, traditional grant writing, I have a lot of experience And we've changed up some of these programs over the years, talked to our congresspeople. I've lobbied in Washington and Lansing in terms of the state for different programs for funding over the years as well. So I would say I have a lot of experience in that regard. Thank you.
Who else has one? Anything? Nothing else? Pete, go ahead.
Tom, are you acquainted with all our reps in Lansing and that, being down that way? You know, I think it's, take care of some of the problems that we have and just to stick up for it. Sometimes when you come across a bridge, I think we're different than anyone else, but we're still part of Michigan. And so we have to stick up for ourselves and then also in, have you ever been experienced with township and cities and when, you know, communication between the two and that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Bloomfield Township was right next door to Birmingham, and they had a major development going into the township that was really exerting a lot of influence and power to get what they wanted in terms of zoning. They were pitting Pontiac to some degree against Bloomfield Township. And I kind of convinced our city council to come to the aid of the township in terms of testimony and what the impact of this development would have been. This was, I know this is hard to fathom, but it goes back probably over a decade, but it was a $2 billion development. There's only a handful of $2 billion developments around the country. And of course, a lot of places would be more than happy to have that kind of development come to their jurisdiction, except that there was a lot of impact into this particular development. So between the township supervisor, who I was good friends with at the time, it was Dave Payne and myself, we had a lot of conversations about how we could mutually support us. The township of Bloomfield in their comprehensive plan recognized Birmingham's downtown as their downtown. That was, they, that was part of the way they thought about this city of Birmingham. And so we had a phenomenal working relationship between the city and the township in that regard. And so, you know, you have to, you have to protect what's yours, but at the same time, you have to work together in terms of a lot of these cross-jurisdictional lines. What was the other part of your question, though, Pete? You started with a little different question. I answered the latter part.
About our representatives in Lansing. Are you familiar with them?
Oh, your specific legislators?
Probably not.
Not, not your specific legislators?
Okay. You know, you know your way around down there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Probably spent too much time there, there and in Washington. Yeah, I understand how all of that works and the different influences that all of these folks have. But throughout my career, I've, you know, I'm on a first-name basis with all of the legislators in the jurisdictions that I serve in. So they know who I am, I know who they are. Their staffs are very comfortable calling us, giving us heads up about what's going on, that we need to be testifying on something, that we need to be writing letters on things. I have to tell you, I think resolutions are nice, you know, on a legislative basis, but I'm not convinced that they're all that successful. I think that personal touch makes a great deal of difference. And I would also tell you that I think, while it's important for me to be involved in that, I think it's really, really important to have an elected official make contacts on occasion as well. As, as elected officials go at the state level or at the federal level, they love to hear from a fellow elected official. And so the manager's role, a lot of times, is prepping the elected official on the nuances of a particular issue and what the strategy should be about how we approach, you know, a state representative or a federal representative on a particular issue. But I can tell you, elected officials, in my opinion, clearly carry a lot more weight than an appointed manager does, even though I'm very comfortable with, with those contacts and making them. It helps to have an elected official along for those conversations when you can.
Another question I have for you, Tom, is that with today's, the way the virus is going around and stuff like that, it just bothers me about our dark story. I sent that email to Sarah and that if it's possible, do something about that. Now, is there advantages of doing something now to get somebody's sympathy to stop pushing these dark story issues through? Because with the lack of income up here, our business is going to be suffering and they're going to say the same reason why they should need a break. But, you know, all our residents, they're paying a regular rate, but it don't make sense for them to be ruling on businesses when we need the income to our shore coming to running the counters. Is now the time?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think now, now is the time to act in, is I understand that, you know, there's three branches of government and the two that, well, the judiciary has been somewhat involved in this whole dark store issue, right? And I think that, that potentially the legislature may have a stronger role in this as they define some of the provisions there, if in fact, that is not preempted at a legislative level. I would also say, you know, there was a comment, you know, we got into this conversation a little bit last time, and there was a comment about, you know, there's, there's others that potentially will go down this path. One of the things that I have seen is it's the nationals that have gone this way at the lead, and partly because I think they have the financial wherewithal and legal departments to really pursue this. And I think if we let too many of these decisions become judicial, you know, precedent, that it gets more difficult all the time to protect ourselves from a legislative standpoint on those taxes. I, you know, I, I, you know, you, you have to look at those judicial rulings as to how they interpret them. If you let it go too far, we may not be able to prevent, prevent some of this going forward. On the other hand, I would say, local businesses, I think, are going to be more challenged to try and do this. So, the nationals have a bit of an advantage. I know legislatively, they did have a way of preventing some of this back in Kansas. So, you know, maybe that's where we have to go. I haven't talked, I haven't talked to Dan Gill Martin over at the League of Cities for a while. He's their executive director to find out where they're at. But this is across the state. I think Frank Walsh has experienced it in his township as well. And, you know, we probably, I probably, first thing I do is talk to Frank at some point along the way and, and see where he's at with it and what he knows in terms of legislatively they have done with the Township Association. And he's knowledgeable about what goes on at the League of Cities too. So, find out where that's all headed. And probably Randy, you know as well, what efforts have been made and what's left to be done, so.
Yep, he's a good source for whatever information you need on that. And in fact, you will, Randy's going to provide some startling information at our board meeting next week about some of those numbers. So.
Yeah. That's a baton. I really don't want to hand, have Randy hand off to me if I'm chosen as chairman, but I think it's part of the reality of what we're dealing with.
We'll stuck with it, yep.
I hope not to drop it.
Off to do our world.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if we think we're good, I'd like to give the board a five-minute break before we start our next interview. Anything else anybody has to say? How about you, Tom? Did, oh, Ernie?
You got that?
That's all right.
That was a question I have, ask Tom if he has anything to say.
Yeah, 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 because he said-
I just want to thank you for, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to interview and, and, and being selected as a finalist. I said it before and Frank said it too in his email to both of the finalists, "I'm very proud to be selected as one of your finalists." And I will tell you that I'm a firm believer that, that, you know, when people get to this stage of the process, it's more about fit, as I said earlier, and that Frank reiterated, it's more about fit. It's who you're comfortable with. And quite frankly, I feel honored to have been this far along in the process. And quite frankly, if you folks decide that the other candidate is a better fit, I understand that, that will not faze me. That's part of the process. That's a part of the process of good governance. So, make your best decision on what you think is best for your township and you'll be right no matter which candidate you choose. And I'm sure Frank has delivered good candidates for you, so best of luck and, and all the best in terms of your township going forward. And good luck. Thank you.
Tom, are you up to the job? You doing it?
Up to it? Yeah, I'm, I'm up to the job. Yeah, that's, I don't have any doubts of being up to the job, so.
All right.
I can do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
You bet. Thank you, folks.
Thanks a lot, Tom. Appreciate that a lot. We'll be in touch.
Okay, take care.
Thanks.
All right, Gary, you want to take a little break? And Randy, is Patrick in yet or?
He's just coming in right now.
Well, let's just get a, a five-minute break and then we'll start again. How's that? Is that okay, Patrick? I know you're early, but we just got finished.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't want to, I was thinking about joining in earlier and I thought, that's not good, so.
That's okay.
I waited as long as I could.
That's fine, I appreciate it. Yeah, just give us about five minutes.
Sure, and good afternoon, everybody.
Yep, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Like, everybody should be muted too. Okay. All right, let me get my notes. So, I just told the board that we should be on speaker view so that we have nobody flashing around and jumping in people's faces. That makes it easier on Zoom.
Gallery view and not speaker view, gallery view.
I had gallery view and you told me it was speaker, so I changed it.
Gallery view.
Yes, that is right. So, I was right the first time.
Yeah. I'm not good-looking in any of them, so don't really worry about it.
Well, we didn't realize that when people were making noises, that, that one person was shooting up on some screens, so I wanted to make sure with Randy how to fix that. So, it is gallery view. All right. So, we're considering this to be a range of discovery a little bit, honing down our two candidates. Everyone should be on mute and then they will raise their hands when they're a question, if they have a question, and we have a set number of questions to ask you. We can do some follow-ups and obviously, if there's anything you want to share at the end. But right to start off with, when do you expect you could assume the position?
My, my timeline was two to three weeks after accepting an offer.
Okay. After the offer, okay. And then, right now, I mean, and you can do this again, but did you have anything you wanted to follow up from the previous interview or do you have questions for the board or staff?
Well, yeah, I, I have, I have some questions. I, I mean, I can ask them now, I guess. One of the, one of the things I don't know that I asked in the first one, but lingered afterwards, after I was thinking about it, was, I know in a lot of cases, townships and cities can have some friction built up over the years, you know, territoriality, whatever you want to call it. How has the, the relationship been with the city of Marquette and the surrounding townships with regard to Marquette Charter Township? Has it been good? Has it been bumpy?
Challenging. Manager Gerard, you've had the most experience because you've had multiple boards to deal with, with both, the city and the township, so I'll defer to you.
Well, let's see, how would I describe it? Kind of like 1939 Germany and Poland, how's that?
So, it's, it's relatively typical. I had that same thing up in Crystal Falls. So, you know, we found a way to work. But, yeah, I, I'm fortunate here that I've had good relationships with the surrounding township, which is Odessa Township, so that's been nice, but nothing I haven't worked for, worked through before. Randy, if I may, what are those challenges? If you can just give me a couple of-
Historically, historically, it's been border issues. You know, we, we have a joint water relationship with the city. We have a joint water agreement. They, they obtain their water from the, the, from the lake, basically. We obtain our water from a well field. And historically, that has been a bone of contention on and off is the, the rate structure. And in one occasion, there was a city manager who used it as an attempt to annex some township property that we ended up going to court on and we were successful. But it's a, it's a, it's a typical city and charter township relationship, guardedly optimistic on lots of things. We work together on a lot of things and, you know, the, the specter of potential boundary issues is always out there.
Sure.
Particularly in situations like this where the economy is down and there's a pandemic going on and there's going to be impact on revenues on both sides of the border, may cause some additional frictions going forward, may not. That depends on whether or not the two governing bodies can get along.
Right, if everybody can play nicely in a sandbox together. Like I said, I've had those before and had water issues in Crystal Falls, so I totally understand. Um, the, the, the second question I had, and I don't think we talked a lot about it in the first meeting, was parks. I know there's, there's plenty of parks, there's plenty of walking trails, there's plenty of things for people to do outside, especially during what's going on here. Are parks as important as they, to, to all of you as they, as they seem to be, as they appear to be? I mean, do you all hold those in, in high regard or, you know, are those down the, down the ladder of priority?
No, that's important. We've focused on complete streets and lots of trails and biking and walking. And while the city may have more physical parks, the township only has a couple, but a lot of the counties and state lands that are open for the public are in the township. So, we don't manage those or control them, you know, other than seeking help or suggestions or whatever. But, yeah, it's very important up here because this is such a recreation area.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I've looked at your audits, I've looked at your budgets, I looked at your master plan. I'm, I'm excited. Looks like it's in, in good financial position, good shape. The, the ability to plan and to look in the future is exciting and quite honestly refreshing. You, most of the communities that I've worked in, save for one, strategic planning was, was a touchy-feely thing that nobody did. And I'm, I'm a believer and a proponent of that. So, Supervisor Gerard, that's all the questions that I have at this point.
Okay, good. Yes, strategic planning is important for us. One of the things I was going to mention too, when you'd asked about the city and the township is, you may or may not know that we have seven that come up, seven board members that come up every four years where the city changes more quickly and, and has staggered. And so, that can pose a, a quantum of a dynamic too, when you're trying to have any kind of conversations. We haven't had any real intense mutual problems in the last few years, so we don't really know as a body, we don't know the city commission as well as previous township boards have with, with their predecessors, so.
Right.
It's, this will probably be together, I'm thinking. We had a, a meeting with communities this morning.
I, I enjoy the, the challenge of getting to new, to know new elected officials, both in my community and neighboring communities and, and working alongside of them and doing the best to put differences that go back 20 some odd years aside for the good of the region. Did that in Crystal Falls, look forward to the opportunity of doing it in Marquette Charter Township.
Okay. Well, let's get started then. So, I'd like you to relax. I mean, you're already a relaxed person anyway, but pretend you're manager already and answer these questions as if you were presenting to the board at a board meeting.
Sure.
If you can keep the answers to about three or four minutes, that should take about an hour by the time we have follow-up questions and if you have any more questions at the end.
Okay.
A little hour, that's, that's okay, but just keep it a little more structured.
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Dave, you've got the first question.
Good afternoon, Pat. We can add in your first question for the board, but considering today's environment of anticipated revenue losses, and with that, the subsequent need to explore new and innovative ways to lower expenses, if you would share your thoughts and experiences with respect to intergovernmental agreements that are primarily designed to lower costs and improve service?
Sure, and thank you. Um, yeah, we had, like I said, in Crystal Falls, we had a water, water, we purchased water from the township and sold it to our residents. That didn't come without some issue from time to time, but found communication to work out very well and to keep the water rates low. The same thing would go for our fire department. The city used to own the fire department and basically got out of it and sold it to the township and let the township run it. And it was a good working relationship. I would generally work to ask questions of the fire chief and the fire board, just to find out what's going on, to relay it to my community. There's all sorts of different agreements that can help with reducing costs. I tend to look internally first and it's not with a slash and burn, you know, benefits or wages or anything like that, but to work smarter, make equipment last a little longer if possible. And really, some of those are within governmental agreements, I suppose, when, like our electric department and our water in Crystal Falls. What I tend to do is, like I said, look internally. Externally, just try to get the best deal and try to work with whomever. I'm not the type who's going to sit at the negotiating table and, and pound a fist and slam and scream and snort and run away. I, I think that's outdated thinking, I think it's antiquated thinking. I think you go in, this is what we have, this is what we can do, this will work for us, let's make it work together, let's find a way to say yes to the, with, alongside the city of Marquette and the surrounding townships and the county and the state. I've worked with MDOT on different things, as you know, through Crystal Falls, M69 and the US2 run through there. I have that established relationship with a superior region office already. I have those different relationships with the MEDC and Mishta and everyone else. And I think I can leverage those to find ways to get good deals for Marquette Charter Township. Basically, the breakdown comes when people don't want to talk, when people don't want to communicate. Anything can be solved. You have to be willing to communicate, even on the things that aren't fun to communicate on, even on the things that will get you screamed at. Down here, we started a, a trail authority. And I'm not exactly Mr. Popular with the trail folks because they were allowed to run any way they wanted using village and township funds for years. And we, we put in a trail authority and we're getting in the get-to-know-you process. And so, it's communication. Communication will breed trust, trust will, will breed cost savings. I'm a firm believer in that.
Okay. Number two is Pete's question. Go unmute.
All right, Patrick?
Go unmute, Pete.
Consider this, same financial challenges mentioned previously, what is the direction you would take in the first month on the job, the first year, and then the first five years? How do you feel?
Sure, the, the first month is the getting to know you month. It's talking with people, it's corresponding with people, it's getting to events if we're allowed to hold them. It's getting out there and, and finding out what the issues are, speaking with staff, speaking with council, speaking with, with anybody. What are the issues going out here? What do we need? What's important, what's not important? Again, the strategic planning that, that you folks are undertaking is critically important. That needs to be done and I'm so glad you guys have started with that. That needs to be focused on, that's the first month, heck, that's the first few months. In the first year, find the savings. Is it in vehicles? Is it in rates? I don't like raising rates, I'm not a fan of raising rates for the sake of raising rates. However, I am a proponent of keeping, of building rates up to stay level. A neighboring community of yours, Ishpeming, didn't raise water rates for a ton of years. And what happened was, they found they had critical infrastructure problems and had to raise rates because basically rural development told them they had to. I like to stay with rates, keep them at where they need to be, keep them, keep them good. I don't want to take advantage of anybody. I'm not trying to make a million dollars off of people, but you have projects coming up, work with those. The first, like I say, the first year is also a getting to know you, but getting to understand the system and the organization as well. In Crystal Falls, Portland, and here in Lake Odessa, it's been critically important just to get to know people. I'm the new guy. Whoever you get in will be the new guy, the not-known person. Build those relationships, talk with people, treat them fair, treat them honestly, open with communication, what you're looking for, move on from there. In five years, if we can go out that far, it will be enacting good policy, finding good deals, finding opportunities through whatever means necessary, be it the state, the federal government, surrounding townships. Bring in the housing, bring in the people. Like I said in the first interview, I think Marquette Charter Township is poised for, with a, is poised for growth and with an opportunity to get better. I know this is very odd to say, but what we're going through right now, you can look at it, crisis or opportunity, and I think we look at this as an opportunity. But we work with staff and council to work together. We're all pulling on the rope in the same way. Do we agree all the time? Absolutely not. That, I've never seen that happen, there's always some disagreement, but find the consensus that will allow us to move forward. Whoever you hire, that person will not be a knight in shining armor. They will have to work with folks, they will have to build relationships and leverage relationships. and leverage relationships that they have with the state of Michigan, like I do already, to get better things, to get opportunities for Marquette Charter Township.
Okay. Any follow-up, Pete?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
Number three is Ernie's question.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Pat, for being here.
Thank you.
Question I have is if a personnel problem becomes known with your immediate staff, what would be your procedure for addressing it?
Well, hopefully, it depends on the personnel problem, but hopefully that has been addressed beforehand. Again, this is an issue of communication in my mind. We've had, when I got to Crystal Falls, I had some employees that were known to bend the rules, shall we say. I made it clear to them right off the bat that these things were going to stop. For example, I'll give you one. I had some staff members, they had safety meetings. And these safety meetings consisted of after work drinking beer in the garage. Came in, this was in my first month, I found it. And I said, you know, look, if you want to have some beers afterward, we have bars. We have parks. We have your backyard. All of these are fantastic places to go, but we do not drink beer here. No. That made me very unpopular. But we can't have the optics of having alcohol on the premises in the garage any old time. Beer cans sitting around. So I nipped it in the bud. And, you know, it worked. They eventually respected it. And when I, when I left Crystal Falls, they had a party for me. And they had it off premises. Thank goodness. And I said, let me ask you guys a question. How many safety meetings did you have after I said no more? And they said, none. You told us to stop, we stopped. Again, it's communication. Deal with it right away. Don't let things fester when it comes to personnel. Set the expectations. Tell them what you want and hold them responsible for it. This is what is expected, and this is what you will deliver. Nobody has a gun to anybody's head saying, you have to work here. If these rules can't be followed, well, then I wish you the best of luck.
Okay. John, you had kind of a two-part question. You can ask both of them now.
Okay. Patrick, in your previous management assignments in Crystal Falls, Michigan, in Portland, Michigan, and your present role as manager in Lake Odessa, Michigan, what weaknesses did you find in those organizations that you can tell us about?
Sure, I'll go right down the line there. Portland, the manager that I followed in there, he was my mentor. He was a good friend of mine. He was the godfather to my child. But in my mind, and I, we had conversations about this, he didn't let his department heads lead their departments. He, I think he was very engrossed in day-to-day. And they're adults. You hired them for a reason. Let them do their job. Let them do their work. Have good communication with them again and again. That was the number one thing in Portland. Other than that, Portland was an incredibly well-run town and continues to be. In Crystal Falls, it was policy that was taken out of minutes from 20 years ago. That was the biggest, one of the biggest things. It was sidewalk replacement that the that the owner shall pay 50% and the city shall pay 50% was, from what I recall, right out of minutes. Adopting formal policy. They didn't have a purchasing policy when I went there. And that's page one of the manager's handbook, or of the municipality's handbook. You need to have a purchasing policy. Good policy. It's like I, like my father used to say, the Parker brothers went to all that trouble to write the rules of Monopoly. Don't you think you should follow them? And I hold to that, that good policy makes for a good workplace. Again, it's setting the expectation of the rules. That was, that was the number one thing in Crystal Falls. In Lake Odessa, there is some policy issues. I came here at a strange time. They had a part-time manager before me who had never been a manager before. And again, she tended to be heavy-handed with her employees. Whereas I'm more of the, let me know what work you're doing. Let me know what you need. And let you do your work. Again, I have a great DPW supervisor down here. I have a fantastic chief of police. I have a very good clerk treasurer. Let them do their jobs. Give them the tools they need within a reason to do their jobs. That, here, that was, that was one of the issues. And before that, the manager who'd been also the police chief here for a long time was let go because it was found he was filling up his personal gas tank on the village's dime. And there is absolutely no place on my team for any of that nonsense. We do not do that. We follow the rules. And like I said, if somebody can't follow the rules, we'll help them to understand that those rules need to be followed. But again, if you can't move the ball, you don't belong on the team. And we'll find somebody else who will. I am relatively no-nonsense when it comes to transparency and ethical actions by my employees. Those were the three things. And here, it's common knowledge that you follow the rules and we are transparent with everything we do. I don't have time to be sneaky. I don't have time to cut the corners. Because when you start cutting corners, eventually the paper gets this small, because you just keep cutting corners. We follow the rules. We do things by the book, and we do them very well here in Lake Odessa.
Okay. And our supervisor is asking me to see if you could talk about what weakness you might be willing to talk about of yourself.
Always a fun question. I can give you the, I work way too hard, or something like that, the self-serving. But you know what mine is, honestly? Typing. I typed a master's thesis with these, just going like that. I've tried software. I'm trying to get better. Typing is one of mine that I I don't care for. I do it by rote, but I watch these people who sit there and type and, you know, they look up at you while they're typing. And that drives me into fits of jealousy. I wish I could do that. I don't know everything, but I'm willing to tell you I don't know everything. My mentor, Tom Dempsey, in Portland, used to say one of my strengths was that I was willing to ask any question. And I was willing to ask that question until I got the answer that answered it for me. I honestly, I'm sure I have a ton of weaknesses. But I try to look at those as challenges when I find one. I try to look at them as something to be overcome.
Thanks very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Randy, you've got number five.
Hi, Patrick. Thanks for being here again today. My question is really short and sweet, so describe your worst supervisor or boss.
My worst supervisor or boss? I've had, basically, the worst supervisor or boss that I ever had, and I'm not going to mention any names, but it's somebody who would give you little direction, a little feedback, and wasn't really there. Somebody who wasn't willing to, you know, you look at it, and it may be cliche, but you kind of look at it as being in a platoon. You want to know that everybody's willing to go up over the top and work together. You want to know that everybody's in it together. And when you have a supervisor who is there 20 hours a week but is reporting 40 hours a week, that's disheartening. It kills morale. You want to know that that person is in it with you, that that person is a trusted source. And that's what I've tried to be, is the one that's, like I said, open door policy, willing to meet and talk to anybody, even people who detest me. And yeah, there are some people out there that do not like me, and that's fine. But willing to work with anybody. But it's those supervisors who give lip service, who are also duplicitous, who, you know, tell you one thing and then tell somebody else another thing. And honestly, that's one of the things that I appreciate about the UP. Sure, this hasn't always been, but both of my stops in Iron Mountain and in Crystal Falls, when somebody said something, you took it to the bank. When they gave you information, you took it to the bank. And if they had a problem with you, they came to you. They didn't go to everybody else. I can't solve problems I don't know about. I can't solve problems that aren't brought to me. It's tough. So a bad supervisor, in my opinion, is one who isn't in the fight.
Hey, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan, you've got number six.
Yes, thank you, Patrick, for being here.
Thanks, Dan.
How would you describe your personality, both on and off the job, to someone who doesn't know you?
My personality would be communicative, fun. I like to, I like to have a good time. We face enough obstacles at work that sharing a funny story. And usually, I'm the butt of my jokes, self-deprecating. Talking to my cops today about different stories, just willing to talk to people. Fun, communicative, serious when they need to be, but dedicated to the job.
Okay. Follow-up? No? My question is, what's the most difficult decision you've had to make at one of your jobs?
Probably this one. Pushing with the trail authority. I knew it was needed, and I knew I had to go through it, and I knew it was going to be a slugfest. And I was right. My council members, most of them wanted it, but they didn't, I don't want to say they didn't care. They wanted, they knew it was necessary, but they didn't want to fight. And rallied behind one council member here. We kind of rallied together, we're both on the board, and worked with the trail, worked to start the authority, worked with my village president to start the authority as well. That was one I, and I, every day, I'm telling you, every day I wake up and I say, my life would have been easier. My life would have been, would have been easier without this. But they're using city funds, they're a city grant, sorry, a village grant and a township grant, and there was no oversight. And that's not the way it's supposed to work. I'm entrusted with the finances, the full faith and credit of the community. And I'll be darned if that's going to fall on my watch. If you're going to use village funds, we need to be involved. We need to have a say. And we need to know that they're being used correctly. That has not been enjoyable, has not been pleasurable, but I know it's going to pay off.
Okay. Side of that. And maybe you've answered this a couple times, but what are you passionate about?
Transparency. Getting the right people in the right places. I'm not a fan of warm bodies. And you could talk to my folks in Crystal Falls, even when it came to seasons, I held interviews. I wanted to see what this person was like. I wanted to get a sense of them. Crystal Falls is a fantastic community. Please do not get me wrong. Portland is, Lake Odessa is. They're all been very, very good to me. But I'm not a fan of, well, he's my brother's sister's aunt's cousin's nephew, so we should hire him. No, you earn it. I had to earn it. You folks all have had to earn it. We all have to earn it. We all have to go through this. I'm passionate about good policy. I'm passionate about everybody understanding the rules and it being well-thought-out, being easily explainable, and why we're taking the action we're taking. I'm passionate about my son, my family, and my fiance. Passionate about reading and learning. I met too many people in my life who seem to think once they reach 40, the learning's over with. No, it's just starting. I got, I got 20-plus years left in being a manager. I have a lot to learn, but I've learned a lot as well. Of those 20-plus years, I'd love to spend them in one final place, and that being Marquette Charter Township. I'd love it that you guys didn't have to go out looking for a manager again for 20-plus years. I'm passionate about my community. And I'm passionate about the Detroit Lions, which probably killed me in this job, but, or this interview, but I am. These are the things that I love.
Okay. Any follow-up, gentlemen? Dave?
Yeah, Pat, I think you touched on it before, but considering what's going on now with the, there's going to be dwindling revenues coming in, and everybody wants to keep moving forward with the township improvements. And looks like maybe the only way to make that happen is through a aggressive state, federal, or local grant program. I'm just wondering if you have any experience with that, and good, bad, or indifferent?
Well, I'm actually working with the Michigan State Police and FEMA right now. Randy, you may have sat in on that webinar, I don't know, yesterday. Well, ours was yesterday for Region Six. And basically, 75% reimbursement for all supplies and overtime manpower for, in response to COVID-19. Worked with MDOT on grants, worked with the MEDC on grants, worked with Mishda on grants. I've worked with every acronym I think the state has, short of the lottery, on grant projects. I love that. I'm, there's another one, Lynn, that I'm passionate about, is finding the resources for the community. And here's the thing, though, again, I'll tell you this. It's my personal belief that this is solved as a team. It's solved as a team. Not saying everything in this world has to be done with a committee for a committee for a committee. But this is a big question. How do we want to move forward? How are we going to move forward? Staff should be involved. Council should be involved. Public should be involved. How are we going to move forward? This belongs to all of us, not just the manager and not just the supervisor. It belongs to everybody. What's the best way forward? None of us have been through the COVID before. None of us have been through COVID-19. We don't know what the world's going to look like after this. It could be all masks. It could go back to normal. I doubt it will. But let's work together to figure this out. I had a, I had a meeting with my department heads last week on how we're going to move forward, what we consider to be the best strategies. And I would move that right over to economic development. With that said, I think all the bushes need to be beat. We need to find out what we can get, how we can get it, how we apply, and move forward. From FEMA, from the state police, from the MEDC. For the businesses, you can't give a lot of money to them, but you can lead them in the right direction. You work with UPEDA, work with the MEDC. Down here, we have something called The Right Place, that is the economic development driver here in western Michigan. Whomever, figure out where we can get these funds, how we can utilize them, not only get back up on our feet, but what's going to happen afterwards. I'll listen to anybody and I will talk with anybody. I have no fear on that. My parents owned a bar and restaurant for 30 years. I've been called every name. I've been given tips. And I'm not scared to talk to anybody and to ask the questions that others may not want to ask. Just, again, it's communication. That is key.
Do you pursue your own grant writing, or have you ever worked with a grant-writing firm or?
I've worked with, I've done both. The, for example, in Portland, I wrote the application for the MEDC grant for facade rehabilitation downtown improvement project. I wrote that on my own. And that was a lot of hoops. Same community, they did an upper-floor lock housing through Mishda. Well, now it's with MEDC, but at that time it was through Mishda. And we worked with a place called Smith Homes Consulting. Marilyn Smith out of Grand Ledge, Michigan, worked with them. In Crystal Falls, for the park grant we received, the park improvement grant we received, we worked with Coleman Engineering. Same place, looking to get grants for sewer improvements, worked with GEI. You know, worked with all them. Sometimes it's good to go with the paid, the hired gun, if you will. The engineers, they know what they're doing. They've done it a lot. Generally, on those much larger grants, it's probably better to go with them. Am I scared to do them? Absolutely not. But like a manager in baseball, I know who to bring in at the right time, bring in that righty from the bullpen. You know, bring that person in. Play to the strengths.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Anything else from the board, Ernie? Anything else from the board, Ernie? Just unmute.
I got, okay, talk now. So, okay. Just to follow up a little bit on the revenue losses that are projected to affect all the communities throughout the state, maybe the United States in that. Looking at your budget for, uh, where you're currently at, looking at your budget and looking at revenue sharing and that. Trying to have hypothetical, hypothetical question really is, how would you look at trying to cut back when you really has nothing to cut back on that, when you, on these small townships and that? How would you go about doing some of this?
Absolutely tough. Again, I'd start with working with staff and working with, uh, the board. That's where I would start. What can we cut? What can we do without? Police service? Can we, can, now obviously you're with the county, but can that be cut back? Is that acceptable? Is that palatable? Um, where can we cut? Again, I don't think you can make it through raising water rates. That's not going to do it. Then that's not going to be very palatable. Um, that, it, it's a tough question. Here in Lake Odessa, what we did, Ernie, is we had a street improvement project that we've put off and I'm actually pointing at it. So we, we have a street improvement project that we put off until the following year. And, and I may have touched on it in the first interview because we have a large egg producing outfit that is one of our biggest, um, um, water users. And they were down 2.3 million gallons in two months, which means we can't do it. Again, you have to prioritize. What do we need? What is critical? What is on the no touch list? What cannot be gotten away with? What can we cut on? And again, I don't think it's staff. I don't think you can cut your way out of these things. Have to be smarter. Have to figure out where the funding opportunities are going to be at. At the same time, again, work with UP EDA, whomever, the Chamber of Commerce, build down the street. I don't care to try to get some new businesses back in here, to get some backfill. But again, it's, it's prioritizing. I'd love to give you some all fired answer of this is how, you know, this is how we do it. Um, I don't know that that exists. I don't know that there is a blueprint, again, because we don't know where we're going to be going, uh, in, in six months, a year.
Thank you. Thank you.
You bet.
Pete, you had your hand up. Unmute.
All right. Oh, I'm just gonna get my notes here. Patrick, uh, with this, the dark story, it's one of the little issues that bothered me a lot. But the dark story, now with the, you know, the loss of projected losses and revenue coming, uh, losses of how many businesses are going to make it through this mess here? And then we also have, you know, a couple of, two or three companies who are filing for dark store relief. You'd think now the opportunity is there an opportunity here for us to, to do something about that? You think there's a good, you know, there's time, times you should do things and sometimes you can't do things, but, no, what we're going through right now, isn't it a time to point out to our legislators that they should not be given tax breaks to these stores in a time like this? I don't think they should be doing it at all, but at especially a time like this. Now we've got three coming up. How do you feel about that? Is that, it's an opportunity here to do something about that or what, how do you feel?
Oh yeah. There, there, that is critical. Um, because basically you'll have the ability to say, you know, how much blood are you going to take from our body? How, how much are you going to do? This is the time to work on it. And this is also the time to turn to those corporations and say, how about being a good steward? How about caring about the community? Are we a dollar to you or are we people to you? The, you know, a lot of these corporations will say, oh, well, we value, we value the community. We value the community. They're so important to us. Put your money where you put your mouth is what I would say them, to them. This is the time to push on the elected representatives, uh, Bo LaFave and, and whomever else. One of the things that, uh, I, I'll give you a, um, uh, an example. When I was in Crystal Falls, I used to attend the UP city manager meetings, um, which I realized township is different, but I would still look to attend those because I made a ton of good contacts. And we were, we were in Ishping and one of the, this is burning me up. One of the governor's, um, um, representatives said, well, you know, we have, uh, $4.1 million rainy day fund. And it was actually funny because Joe Erickson from Montsenhagen and myself, we kind of shot our hands up and said, uh, and revenue sharing hasn't gone up in how many years? And Michigan lags behind so much in revenue sharing for how many years? And I'm sure Randy's giving you a graph or somebody has that shows all the other states going up at least to some degree and Michigan going down. I'm not afraid to ask those questions. I'm not afraid to call them on, you know, call them under the carpet. You know, this, you're, you're taking, you're taking from the local communities. Dark stores? Yes, this is the time to press. My, my, my theory is, is that, uh, if I, my pulse is still going, it's time to press. I, I don't see there as a, as not the time. They have to understand their, just like I have to and you have to understand the ramifications, a policy that you pass for the, for the greater good, and they need to understand the policies and the laws that they pass and how that affects people. That, that's, that's my personal feeling. I've, I've always said that I, I don't like the disconnect that often exists between the UP and, uh, and, and Lansing. Um, you know, I, I used to, it was kind of a line, but I got to tell you, I believe it, that a lot of times the folks down here in Lansing seem to only care about the UP when it comes to taking vacation or, you know, having a, a, a PR campaign. And there's so much more than that. After all the time I've spent up there, I know there's so much more than that. Um, so it kind of drives me nuts. So it's staying on top of, of folks in Lansing, not just Bo, um, not just any other elected representative. Coming to this Capitol conference down in Lansing, they have the MML holds. That's the time to be there and to beat the bushes and to talk about it. That's the time to get in somebody's ear, even if it's putting a bug in there. That, that will work. You know, look at what you're doing, you know? And again, going back to the corporations, you care about your community, prove it.
Right now, our, our townships have spent quite a bit, bit of money on it. We try to get more and more people involved in it. We try to get the county involved, we go to the library, all different departments. Well, all of a sudden they come up with, oh, that's market township problem. Well, all of a sudden they start finding, finding out when they weren't getting the money from us, that it's their problem.
Right.
Escanaba. Escanaba is still fighting it right now.
So, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I know. It was at, uh, and if I'm getting his name wrong, I think it was Jim O'Toole. I remember talking to him about that. And when I was up in Crystal Falls and just, you know, it, it, it's a, it's a travesty what it's done, what it does to communities. And it's one of those that I think you talk until you're blue in the face or until they put you six feet under. It's such a wrong.
It seems like Joe Erickson doing a pretty good job up in Montsenhagen, isn't he?
I like Joe. Joe's a good golfer too. Boy, you know, he's, he's a, he's, he's a strong willed individual. Him and, and Bob LaFave are a couple of my favorites in the UP, as well as Ray Anderson down there.
He used to rent from me, so. All right. Well, thank you very much for your answers.
You bet. Thank you.
Wherever we are, whatever we do, this dark store isn't the right thing to do. And the Chamber of Congress is the one that we're fighting. They're looking for their constituents also, but it's just not right for the residents.
I, I agree 100%. It's all about equity and, and giving, giving equal treatment to folks.
All right. Thank you, Patrick, for your answers.
You bet.
Anybody else want to follow up? Okay. Patrick, how about you? Any else to ask or?
Well, no, I, I, I really don't have any other questions, but I, I got to tell you, I'm, I'm incredibly, uh, interested and excited about this opportunity. Um, I've been a Michigan guy all my life. I've never lived in any other state. You know, I've been in government service for, oh boy, about 13, 14 years now, and it's all been in Michigan. And I'm, I'm just, I'm excited about this opportunity and I'm excited about the opportunity to get back to the UP. And to tell you the truth, I'm actually in the process of putting down a, um, down payment on buying some land up north of Channing. So I'm excited. That's where my camp's going to be next to my buddy's camp. So looking for, uh, 40 acres at $20,000. I'm telling you, the guy's giving it away, but I'm willing to help him give it away. Um, I'm excited about the next 20 years of my service and I'd love for them to be in Marquette Charter Township. I think you have had good management, good leadership, and I see nothing but upside and I'm excited about it. So I appreciate you letting me interview a second time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your efforts and your time and, and sharing everything about your life with us. We, uh, well, we've got a board meeting on Tuesday, two weeks from now, and we'll, we'll figure out what we're going to do between now and then or that night or whatever. We don't have a plan. This is a work session. Making any motions today.
Understood.
Meeting, it's kind of all up to the board, but just so you know where we are.
Well, I, I appreciate it. And, and again, thank you, everybody. And Randy, good luck to you. I'm actually looking down at Mr. Jarrett right now, so it looks, it's kind of weird, but good luck to you and, uh, whoever, uh, whoever succeeds you has big shoes to fill.
That's for sure. Okay.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Unmute. Unmute.
Yeah, there is no public comment for the second public comment, Lynn.
Good. Any board member comment? Yes, Dave?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if you want to wait until a week from Tuesday to, to, uh, discuss this at a, at a meeting or you certainly have the power to call a special meeting if you want. Uh, I think.
Let's meet next week.
Or any two board members can call a special meeting. So I guess I would encourage a special meeting so we can discuss this and hopefully resolve it sooner than 10 days from now.
I really don't want, I was telling Clerk Rattari, I just soon have a special meeting next week. Um, obviously we could have scheduled that if this were a special meeting, but not with the work session, but I think that's important that we.
You have the power.
Well, we can, I, we can direct the clerk to, to set it up. Like I say, we can't make a motion to do it, but um, if you and I agree, that's enough.
Well, then that, no, it's, it's, uh, I think the way it goes is the supervisor can call a special meeting on their own or any two members of the board can call a special meeting on their own.
Yeah.
So that's what I said. You have the power to do that all on your own.
Yes. Well, I don't like to pull that card if I can help it. Um, pleasure of the board?
I'd like to set it up for next week.
Okay. You want to check your calendars? Everybody have them with you?
I'm thinking Tuesday at one o'clock's a good day. Matter of fact, now that I look, Tuesday at one o'clock's an excellent day.
I did check with Roger. I would like to have him part of the deliberating.
Right. Ernie has his hand up.
Sorry? Yes, Ernie?
Tuesday is not good for me.
Okay. Tuesday at all?
My wife has a doctor's appointment in the afternoon, so that could be a problem. I don't know how, how that's going to go at all.
Any other day works for me, Monday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday morning, I'm got a meeting.
Got a standup.
Clerk Rattari.
Yeah, I'm on night, so anytime, uh, after one o'clock, two o'clock.
Any day?
Any day.
Why don't we put it Monday at two o'clock or something like that?
Sounds good.
How's that for everybody?
Works for me.
Monday, the 11th at two o'clock? Hey.
Hey, with me?
Okay. The supervisor will call that then. We're no, no motions here, so she will call that and I will post it.
Post it? Yep. Okay. All right. What else? Anybody else had anything? The other board member comment? Pete?
For those who weren't here earlier, I just wanted to wish Dan Eversen a happy birthday. His birthday is tomorrow, so you can just see the gray coming in his hair, so I just want to.
Thanks again, Pete.
Happy birthday, Dan.
Happy birthday, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay. Just need one more motion.
No motion, just adjourn.
One more comment before we vote on that. Pete, on using how, how he figured out how to use the mute button.
I never shut it off. I just can't get that column or what they're saying, the gallery. I haven't, I could, you still can't find that. But that's all right.
Well, as long as you don't have me in this case, all over your screen, you're doing it right.
All right. I got three of yous on there.
Looks like a checkerboard up on the top. Looks like a checkerboard up on top of your screen.
I don't have nothing on the top of my screen.
Move your, move your mouse up there. Move your cursor up.
Not using a mouse. I'm just using my finger. Oh, there it goes, right there. Oh, I just, oh my God. Right at the end. Frank, you can't tell me that.
You have everybody now?
Yeah, I'll adjourn.
That's a scary, that's a scary picture right there.
All right.
Meeting.
2:53, we are adjourned.